So motion made by Stan Grabber and seconded by Gabor. Uh carried by all should be uh after that. That wording there, and that was for the resolution pre uh reapproving the T I D.
Oh, carried by all.
Yeah. Missed that when we added that in. So that's the only amendment that I have unless someone else has something that they wanna.
If I look for approval of the August twenty six meeting minutes.
I'll move they be approved and amended.
I'll second it.
Motion's made and second to amend the August twenty six meeting minutes on favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Who opposed? Excuse me, committee has been approved. Retsloff update site plan Dave.
And we're gonna just have a couple slides. Been working with Randy a little bit. I don't think he's got quite the staff that uh the other developer has. Um he's still short the uh the landscape plan. And they call it a volto- volto voltaic plan, but it's basically the lighting plan. Uh he's telling me he'll have those to me in a week or two. And what I'm proposing that uh we allow him to move forward pending receipt of those. And then obviously if those aren't quite up to standards, we could bring it up again at the next meeting, but uh he he's kinda chopping up the bit to get going on this project and uh I don't necessarily know that the landscape plan would, you know, cause a big rift. Assuming they meet the minimum standards set up in the ordinance. But he said he'll have those to me in a week or two.
Anybody have any discussion on it? Everybody okay with that, what Dave just said then? Proving him and contingent to the on him finishing so he can get started? All in favor of approving the Retsloff site plan?
Was there a motion already?
No, no motion yet. I'll I'll make that motion.
Motion?
I'll second.
Motion's made and seconded to let Retsloff go ahead with his site plan. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Close. Motion's carried. Dave again, Sidurski.
All right. Uh again, I think we're gonna start with a small video if we.
It's not.
I'm having problems today with the video. So you're onto the video?
It's in your packet.
I got the video. I can do that.
Did send a video um that I thought might be a nice opener.
You were mentioning something about the lighting for this one here?
He's got all his stuff together.
Well, he does.
Yeah. I don't know if it's in this view here necessarily. But he has, they call it a photovoltaic plan. And it's basically the lighting plan, and that should be in the packet.
They they do this same plan.
Nothing's changed.
Yeah.
Uh I just thought this might be a nice opener to kinda show.
It's good looking.
Yeah, what it's gonna look like.
Is that are those second garages in the middle there or those are the first ones or for the?
Uh those would be for the apartments.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Cause you. Say heart and build its plan, right?
You can see the ones on the right have the apartments. There's two different styles. Some of them are attached. These are attached.
And then these are across.
Unattached.
Yeah.
Right.
Nice.
Hey, okay. Get my agenda back.
And then they they've got all their other. As far as I can tell, I think everything's in their packet for the site plan that that we would require. Got elevations. Landscape schedule including what trees and where they're gonna be bushes and other plantings.
Was there was there an issue with uh people living out there worried about the lights and stuff? Is that it?
That's all part of the plan. Um our ordinance doesn't allow you to illuminate other properties.
Yep.
Um directly. I mean, you're you're gonna have some some
Yeah.
Obviously, but you can't have anything directly at any neighborhood.
Light or something like that. Yeah.
Yep. They have to be contained on the property for the most part.
Look, I'd look for a motion to approve the Siderski site plan.
Awesome.
Motion made and seconded. That Siderski site plan be okay? All in favor?
Aye.
Close. Motion carried. Hey. Do we wanna let the gentleman explain a little bit about the?
So um this is uh Jeff's uh where we had the open house today. Um used to be a dealership. He has applied to the state and been approved for a uh automobile dealership license. From what he's telling me, there will be no outside uh storage of any vehicles. These are mostly vintage vehicles that he's gonna sell. Uh the only impact that I could even think of would be possibly a sign. And then maybe a website somewhere that someone ran across to, you know, look at. I I'm assuming most of the sales will be online. I mean, he might have someone come in. Look at a vehicle or something once in a while, but I I can't imagine more than maybe once or twice a month. And then even probably some overseas clients he would have as well. So.
I will let him speak to this if he'd like.
Thank you for having me. My name is Jeff Burgum. I own four twenty one South Pearl Street here in New London. I run my insurance agency out of the front, but I my true passion is automobiles. I do insurance because it supplies me the means to fulfill my passion. I'm not looking to buy two, three thousand dollar cars and put them out there with signs on them for sale. That's not who I am. I've I've got sixty plus cars of my own. And I'm I would just like to have a few consignment cars and a few of my own vehicles in the back of my shop for sale. I'll have a small little sign outside of my back door because that's required by state law, but that's about the extent of my operation when it comes to cars.
I'm sorry. I wanted to get up to the grand opening today and I was gone, so I didn't get.
Stop over sometime. Come come take a walk through. It's it's really a a unique place inside.
Billy was just saying that was really.
Or it's kinda set up like a fifties cat. I I like antique junk and old stuff. So you know, my my office looks kinda like a fifties cafe. You could come in, put money in the jukebox down at my booth and basically I'm lunching.
Clean junk.
Yeah, I I just I I I've got a passion and a love for cars and I'm at the age now where I I gotta do something with it or I'm never gonna do anything with it. So that's why I'm here in front of you today. The very welcoming atmosphere there.
Yeah. Anybody here got any questions? Have you got any questions of them?
I I would just like to add that the ordinance does allow as a conditional grant. Mortar cool. I take that back. A conditional use.
Yeah.
A conditional use. It has a lesser threshold of requirements um for mortar vehicle dealers, including open sales lots. Like I said, he he's well within that. Normally with this, you'd have a site plan and stuff, but since the footprint is not gonna be changed with addition. He's also met the building code requirements for fire separation between the office space and the storage of the vehicles uh that he's up to code uh to open this up as well.
Maybe we could dealership before.
And we do have an ADA compliant bathroom in there, so we are compliant. If we do have somebody handicapped on, they need to use the facilities. We've actually ran across it already. We did have somebody handicap come in. We let them in our big overhead garage door and loaded them out of the vehicle into the wheelchair and right up to the front to take care of the business. Have them out of the rain, the snow, the you know, weather conditions. So.
Sounds great. Yeah.
That, you know, I just just I've got a passion for cars. I'm halfway through my life. I gotta do something with it before my time is up. So that that's why. And the vehicles I'm looking at are gonna be nineteen fifties, sixties, seventies, forties, thirties type collector cars. And if I do anything higher end, it'll be in a Ferrari or Lamborghini or Bugatti type type rental vehicles.
Wow, so.
Do you have outside parking currently?
Yeah.
On site outside?
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah, we had a parking lot all redone, repaved and uh everything before we opened up the facility.
These vintage cars could be parked outside? Is that what you're saying?
The thought of rain or somebody.
I know.
I would never.
That's what I that's what I say.
I've 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 got a fifteen thousand square foot building that I rent. I have my other vehicles.
Okay, and that's what I was.
I can only fit, right now I've got five or six my own cars in the back of my building. I'm lucky if I could fit maybe two or three more in there. So I would probably never have more than ten vehicles in the back of that place.
For the record, um he could do that if this is passed. Uh like I said, I don't see it happening, but you approve this, technically he could have out there based on the ordinance. So.
And that that's what I that was my question as well, just so we are where the full aspect.
But the thought of leaving a collector car.
Correct.
Causes me anxiety. So I I I've never, I don't even wash my cars. Water never touches my cars. They all get dry every single year. I'm I'm real particular.
That was a car lot before. There was cars parked out there years ago and lurked. Yeah, it's so.
Maybe I could share an interesting story with you while we're here. Back in nineteen thirties, Guy Siegel had bought that. That was a Hudson S six car dealership. I found the original sign that Guy Siegel had on that building back in the thirties. It's now hanging up in the front of my office.
Really?
Guy Siegel got caught selling stolen vehicles out of this building, was sentenced to six years in prison. He gave the governor of Wisconsin a vehicle. The governor commuted his sentence to one year. Guy Siegel got out of prison and then hung himself in a one car garage off Wyman and Washington Street shortly after he got out. So just a little neat history.
Little history on that.
Building was built in nineteen nineteen. It was a car dealership. The majority of its life was a restaurant at one time, an ice cream stand. There's still a walking cooler downstairs in the basement. Uh the building never had hot water, air conditioning. It's now got all those amenities. We replaced all the electrical from the road in, all the plumbing from the road in. Uh built the ADA compliant bathroom, put a new roof on, re-tuck pointed it, had all the painting done. I mean, it just goes on and on and on.
Yeah. Looks really nice. I mean, I got a lot of people talk about how nice it looks.
It's not the last building that I have my eye on. There's there's a few more that I hope to get my hands on and and bring them back to their former beauty again.
Good. Sounds really good. I'd look for a motion to grant him a conditional use permit.
I would some more.
I'll second.
Motion made and seconded. Any not and talk about it? No? All in favor?
Aye.
Close.
Thank you guys very much.
Yeah, thank you.
Job well done.
Thanks, guys. Please stop through if you haven't. You're always more than welcome. We got sort of coffee. Always a good time.
Soon as I find the permit application for that, I will get it to you.
Okay. Am I good to send this up into the state?
Yep.
All right. Thank you guys again.
Thank you. Yep. And any updates on planning permission? Oh, yeah, we gotta talk about this a little bit. We don't have that on the agenda.
But we can discuss.
Well, we were saying we were gonna give out the books tonight and let people look them over and then next month.
Yeah.
Come back with it.
That's kind of what my thoughts were.
Yeah, yeah, get it on the agenda for next month.
So.
You can talk about this.
Can you get one? Mark, Eric?
I did not get one yet.
He's got one right there.
Thank you.
Do.
Like I said before, if if you wanna just leaf through them, kinda look stuff over. Kinda decide if you think it's something that we wanna take a look at or or something that we definitely don't wanna we can we can amend this, take away or add to as we see fit. And then I'll I'll come up with some language for the junk and the disabled vehicle ordinance. And then we we can also tweak that. Uh I I want something a little bit more substantial. So we can move some of these uh plated properties um make the city look a little nicer.
Isn't the on vehicles, is it? Uh they can have a plate on it, but they have to be drivable? And if they don't have a plate on, they if the plate's not up to date, they have to be moved. Is that?
The way the ordinance is set up right now, they have to be plated and operative to be stored on the property. And although we, there's a lot of them that aren't in the correct their part part correctly, there's some language in there that we probably wanna go look at, although we don't wanna get you know, too too restrictive um on that, just because it's a little bit of a nightmare trying to enforce uh some of that.
Is there a certain number of vehicles that are allowed on a property or not?
No.
Okay.
Like, is a license, is it, isn't it a licensed a driver or something in the house or something? It can be a car for a licensed driver or something?
Uh where I came from, they used to they used to allow four vehicles. And then any inside a garage or a building didn't count toward that four. And then if you had more than four drivers, they allow you additional vehicle per. So if you had six drivers living in one home, they allow you up to six vehicles. Uh and that's something you might wanna look at. But uh and again, sometimes you gotta make sure you aren't being too too restrictive on some of the stuff.
Well, this gives us some guidelines to go by.
Yep.
So this is what you used to use where you work, where you work?
This is used pretty much primarily throughout Michigan and several other.
So you're pretty familiar with this?
Oh, very familiar. Yeah.
So is there anything in here that you don't agree with?
Oh, yeah, there's. So every municipality, so I worked in a a larger city. So we were a lot more restrictive and we had ten people, you know, that's all they did was well, look at this kinda stuff. So they're real proactive and you know, like I was telling you, we'd send out each fifty grass notices a day sometimes during the summer. And you know, quite a bit of and we we did a lot of cleanups. We basically you, we send you a notice. And uh you got seven to ten days to clean up. And if you didn't, we'd like I said, that's something I think we need to do here, but I think there should be some more steps before we get to that. You know, process. So we'll have to work on that. Uh you know, especially if we're talking maybe a new attorney, maybe coming up with a just kind of a policy on how we handle everybody the same. That way, some can't argue that, you know, someone's getting different treated differently. So.
So if I read through this thing, is there anything that I should look for that you don't like?
Um just kinda your take on what you where you think the city might wanna move to. So if you don't think the say for instance, the junk ordinance isn't really addressing some of the issues in the city properly. Then obviously we wanna tweak that part of the ordinance. And there might seem to be some stuff in there like, no, that isn't something that New London, you know, would wanna pursue. But this has to deal a lot with housing too, uh where you've got even houses where all the paint's coming off them. You know, we have that in our ordinance here too, but this is kind of a kind of a catchall for what I would call minimum property standards for the city that we would wanna adopt. And it'd be not just for residential um.
To look at like the uh housing and so that.
Those are, those are in here. Oh, the others. Yeah. Yeah, I don't know if we wanna, do we wanna print those out? Ten and fifteen?
Can we can at least email it to you, but we can print them out.
Otherwise, around the city website too, if you wanna, if you're at a computer and you wanna just kinda.
I'd like to be able to compare or whatever. So.
I looked through some of them. It's pretty hard to follow in there. Like it hard to find things in there.
Well, in hours. If you go to the building department.
Hours. Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah, go to the building department and then go on the left side. It's got code and ordinances. You can click on seventeen, which is this one. Or tap you to, you know, print some off if we think we need them.
I would definitely like one, please. Cause I would definitely like the red line compared.
Yep, I would. Can I get that one emailed to me? Um, that's the way to do that.
No, and technically these at some point will get destroyed because these are proprietary thing. We have to buy these. I printed this off when I, you know, eight, ten years ago. So we can use it as a working document, but at some point we'll get copies for everybody if we decide that. And then we'll have a it's got the all the original language in it. And then any changes we either add to or take away, we'll have what they call a green copy. That the the writing will be in green in there to know that that was kinda for New London.
And my my kind of thought on it was maybe one meeting or we can look at a couple of them for one meeting and then next meeting, maybe look at a couple other ones rather than trying to go through a an hour of it at one meeting, just, you know, fifteen, twenty minutes at at a planning commission meeting. Look at each one of the ordinances or what it is and see if it's what we want. If it is, just, you know, leave it the way it is.
So probably start with junk, I would think.
I I don't, I don't have a problem where we start, for as I'm concerned.
And then maybe vehicles from there.
Everybody else feels right with that.
Okay. And then the other stuff's more to deal with. Just households that we end up after whatever, you know, I've been out with police on a few properties that were substandard. The building here on the corner.
Oh, yeah.
Would have been able to use that in some instances um to get where we got with that. Took a little bit of work to get there, but uh.
Need that on housing. We've struggled with rentals for years. We've had near riots whenever we tried to, you know, like once we tried to uh pass an ordinance where if the in between renters that the inspector would go in and inspect to make sure it was suitable. Oh mercy. Nothing happened. You know, so we've we've really gotta get some meat on the stick and do something.
I could see that being a touchy subject, especially for some of the people that own forty houses in the town.
And do we have a and do we have a problem? Is there a lot of complaints that things are out of compliance?
I'm not getting a lot, but a lot of people don't realize they probably would have a an avenue to pursue. I've had probably four tenants since I've started. That's called. I I think there is a group that does landlord tenant dispute stuff with the county. I think it's Wapaka, but I'm not sure, but they have, they can go to them for stuff too, but they don't probably realize that I that they.
Right.
Man that they have. So and then I can use our current housing ordinance to deal with deficiencies that are in there. So.
Like what kind of deficiencies are those uh tenants complaining about?
Uh faulty wiring.
Okay.
Handrails missing, uh holes in the floor. We had one wanna say it was in Washington and that that, I mean, there was dog feces in there all over the place, broken windows. I'm sure there's quite a few substandard rentals in the state, not just exterior wise, but I'm assuming there's quite a bit. And then I've just got a bunch of landlords that I know are replacing water heaters, furnaces and doing all that kinda stuff without permits. So um someday down the road, I think the city should seriously look at uh anything with three units or more. Doing a bi-yearly or every three years, just do a walkthrough and kinda bring them up to code and include, you know, some of them that they're the buildings are aged enough where the exterior decks or something or might be to the point where they need to be replaced. And you don't really catch that stuff unless you have some sort of system for kinda deal with rentals. And I think you're gonna end up with more as time goes by. You know, as property comes more, you know, people are gonna be moving here probably soon, but um and then maybe work at someday doing single family and duplexes too. So there's a quite a bit of, not a lot of blight here. I mean, I've seen worse, obviously, but there's a fair amount of properties that are in pretty poor condition.
I just, I I mean, I I'm very concerned about the impeding on 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 personal property.
Yep.
There's like, again, I said, there's a, there's a very fine line of what blight is in one person's.
And look, yeah. A lot of these are, you know, they're properties for them to make money. So it's not in their best interest to spend money on getting these things up to code and safe and, you know, some of the other things.
I I I don't disagree.
And those tend probably to have cheaper rent.
Yeah.
Which, you know.
Yeah. I've already, you know, there's a couple landlords around that kind of, okay. This is probably has a little more validity to it than others. So.
Correct.
But and I'm I'm not saying it's even something, you know, within the next two, three years, but I think at some point you're gonna want some type of program. Cause these houses are getting aged. I mean, I was dealing with houses that were about a hundred years old where I came from. So a lot of them had, you know, some structural deficiencies, but then, you know, a lot of tenants just going and do a lot of damage. So this last landlord said, thanks for kicking them out. Because, you know, he was able to get it, cause they hadn't paid rent in six to eight months and.
And that's a way to look at it too. At least somebody is then policing that for landlord, I guess, you know.
Some some don't want you in there.
I was just.
Obvious reasons. And then others would just soon, you know, I've got this house is certified with the city is, you know, up to code and safe and, you know.
I know, I know the chamber has a list of um landlords in within the city. Maybe that's something we can reach out and send an email out of of a discussion. You know, a discussion line item of what are your thoughts, you know, of of inspections is something that you wanna do in in between rentals is something you wanna do biannually or you know, where do they fit on that and give them a little bit of room to speak on that?
Or make it voluntary for a while and see how that works.
Yeah, and just and just see where they are. Like you said, some of them don't want you in there. Some don't care and let's feel everybody out and.
Well, yeah, you because we were just talking about one end respective. The other, the other end is people with the nice houses that they're in. No, they don't want them to get trashed either. So the sooner they can see the stuff needs to be replaced, it's cheaper for them in the long run. You know, uh on a lot of things. So.
And as a landlord, if it say that we do do that inspection and we can title it as a certified rental. Certified by the city of New London or whatever. I mean, the landlords should be able to charge more rent. I would think that they would be you know, happy and plus then, I mean, it would be someplace for renters to look at which ones are certified, which ones aren't. You know, which ones are safer, which ones are not.
I I I can see that. Also keeping in mind that we we need affordable rentals.
Yes.
Cause not everybody can afford.
Right.
Affordable but still safe, right? I mean, you know, there's a line there.
Yeah, as a as a former Realtor. We used to get into houses that nobody should let them.
Should be bulldozers.
Yeah, and uh and there was no way, you know, you just wouldn't take the listing, but somebody did, you know.
I like I like this discussion. It is very interesting. I and I'm looking forward to diving into this stuff, but I I'm straight up honest, I'm I'm very reserved and on both the city aspect and our our citizens. It's a very fine line to walk and and.
How far do we go?
Exactly. And and to be reserved. I mean, you definitely gotta look at the best interest of our citizens as well. So.
Everybody, not every person's idea of beautiful is another person's.
Hundred percent or livable.
Right.
And I know we have codes to go on.
Yeah. And and that's why I said we can get this book and get things going, which is gonna be a long process.
Absolutely.
Get it done. But at at least it gives us something that we can look at and say, hey, here, here it is right here. And it's not just New London. I mean, this is a code for all over.
To reinvent the wheel.
No, right.
We we have a lot of homeless people in New London already. I don't wanna create more.
You know, maybe start with kind of a curb appeal approach, you know, where we're getting some of the properties are pretty rough shape.
I I think the yard cleanup is is probably the biggest complaint.
Yeah.
That that I get anyway. It's the biggest complaint is yard, is is junk in yards. And if we get that one of our first, I might, to me, that's what I would do is my first step would be look at at garbage in yards and stuff, you know, on safety. And if we can get something in there, you know, then move, just move along to to whatever.
And that's kinda what I was saying. I I've brought that up like, like you said, the curb appeal and and my aspect is in role when I came in as mayor's thinking that curb appeal, you know, your your stuff and your yard may not be junk to you. It it your pride possession, but it's your neighbor's junk.
Right.
So maybe we can come up, you know, when it's something like that, you know, somebody's got their wheelbarrow in their front yard or or they store their ladders in their front yard or something. Maybe we can re-educate on a better way of storing it. So it's it's not a blight situation. Yeah. Hey, you know, is if you just put this behind your garage. There nobody has any complaints, you know. Exactly like you said, and that that's coming with curb appeal.
Yeah.
I know, I know we drive around, there's a house in mine that has to me, nothing but weeds and they're high as the the windows in this house. But they're all flowers. I mean, to me, it just looks disgusting. But well, you're that person's prideful on what they do.
You're gonna run in like the summit. There is a perfect example of this because one person goes and buys a dollar flower, a dollar tree and sticks in the ground and is happy as peacock. And the next person comes and spends a boatload of money and does not wanna be next to that one dollar flower. You know, and there's, there's no way that you're gonna make everybody happy with that, you know, I mean, that's why these are, they gotta be pretty vague.
I think the minimum approach is the the way to go.
Yeah.
Okay, we're gonna allow you.
Yeah.
Like you talked, the the wheelbarrow baby or whatever, but at some point, you know, these are our minimum standards. Everybody's gonna kinda be held to this minimum of minimum standards. So.
Yeah, as as far as trying to clean up all the garbage, that's gonna be tough as far as what you see as garbage, you know.
We can, we can get to this point. I and I think um I think the city's ready for it. And and like you said, we get a baseline and 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 like Bob said, you know, that's I I definitely agree and and it's in the right direction. I'm, I can't wait to dive in all this and we start hashing all that out and and get a good guideline, get you some a baseline to work off and set something forward. I know you've been doing a great job with what you, what's on your plate already.
Wish I had more time, but yeah.
Moving forward, yeah. And and you've been doing a diligent job of getting things cleaned up and answering all the complaints and and whatnot. And and this will give you some teeth to to really dig in with. Um but I wanna bring it back to what chat. And this will give you some teeth to, to really dig in with. But I wanna bring it back to what chapter did you say that was? Chapter? Chapter ten?
Uh, the nuisance?
And, and, uh, ten. And then what was the?
The housing one's fifteen.
I'm on it right now that way. And did you say, is there a specific one for vehicles?
Uh, that's in the nuisance ordinance.
That's in the nuisance, okay.
Was it ten?
Yeah. I don't know what code section.
Housing and fair housing code is fifteen.
Yeah, there you go.
Yep, nuisance vehicles.
And how you got to this point? Would, do you go to the city clerk? Is that what you want?
Building inspector. Go to building inspector at the top and then multiple coded, codes and chapters.
Chad, how did you just get there? Cause that, right there.
Yep, so on the homepage, I went to departments and then clerk's office.
Oh.
Or you can go.
And then the entire municipal code, we click on there, everything's right here. I don't, I haven't seen, I guess I haven't gone that way.
It's the same way. You're just going through the building inspector.
So departments, building inspector. No, same thing.
But if that's what we're gonna look at, it's like chapter ten and fifteen?
Uh, for the two things we're talking about.
Okay.
I mean, there's other stuff there and.
Right.
You know.
That, if you could get that printed there or something that we can look at.
So all, all of that stuff is in this thing?
Uh, no, all of them?
Oh. Or is this just?
That is encompasses housing and nuisance. So it'd be, it'd be a one-size-fits-all document. And I'm assuming. Two-thirds of the stuff in those two ordinances are at least addressed in here. It might be more. Interpretive on my end where I get to determine, but I, I think we clean that up to where. It's pretty static. And then you, like you said, you just have some language in there about outdoor storage. And that really kind of takes care of the stuff that you didn't think, oh, I forgot to add in, you know, sure, whatever. So tires is a big one. And they, and they're gonna argue, well, it's manufactured for outdoor use, so that you have to have in. Listed separately. And then any other items stored outdoors that aren't manufactured for outdoor use. So even really a pile of two-by-fours and lumber, unless it's treated, it's really. You know, it's gonna rot outside anyway, but it should be stored indoors. So, and then putting a tarp over it really doesn't meet. The ordinance. You know, that, that kinda, everything you throw a tarp over it, you know, even a disabled vehicle, like. Not really. So you might have one unlicensed vehicle on the property, say he's got a car or something. And then maybe just kinda have a tight fitting car cover on it, you know, if you decide you wanna do something like that. For licensing. But, uh, like I said, we can play around with this for a while and see if we can come up with some stuff that we think we might wanna.
So hit these two up and bring that back to next month and, and. Ash out what we can, start with ten and then move on to fifteen, correct?
That's, that's what I was thinking. That way we can kinda get our stuff cleaned up. And it's not gonna be a quick process.
I was just gonna say, these, just these two, two chapters seem like, uh, quite a bit, but they're, if we can get them cleaned up and, and used, I think it's gonna be huge for the city.
Well, it's like, it's like, uh, the covenants is in, in a, uh, let me put up houses, housing complex up. They got covenants in there. For God's sake, you gotta have your sheds gotta match the color of your house. I mean, if, this is no different. Than what they have for covenants in new subdivisions. They got them in East Ridge. There's covenants is out there.
I agree.
That, they're going way past what we have in ours.
But we gotta.
Even on, uh, at my house, uh, on Becker.
Right.
I mean, and that's an, an older, I've been getting now an older subdivision. And that already had a covenant. And I built it twenty-three years ago.
So we're not really doing.
I think that's different from the city doing it compared to some.
And it's an addition unto what the city already doing. However, we have to make sure this is, is acceptable by all.
Yeah.
You know, not everybody can live in these suburbs and stuff like that. Not everybody has that means.
Yeah.
Not saying that we are going to lessen it because of that, but we have to make sure that we're not gonna code ourselves, right, and, and make people homeless.
Yeah, you don't wanna get real restrictive, but that's not the idea. But it's just the idea that, that if Dave gets a. Come call on something, he can go out there and say, okay, this is what it has to be. Not that you wanna try to squeeze everybody.
Correct. And that's where I was going with Dave's, doing a very good job of working with people, giving them time, timely things and discussing it with people and. I, Mr. Vincent's doing a really good job of what he does.
There's just a few things that if it gets cleaned up around some places that, that's gonna make people happy. I mean, it's gonna look like you're, you're doing something. Be, I mean, because then it looks like you're doing nothing.
Right.
Hopefully rock the block this week.
That might be great.
And that's kinda what I was trying to kick that off as far as, um, the summer. This is gonna be our big last push and. Not only with that rock the block, that's gonna spread. I mean, your neighbor is gonna get some stuff done and then all of a sudden this guy's gonna get done because this house was done. Uh, it's gonna, gonna spread and hopefully we can continue that.
I just hope these people that are getting their houses fixed get some sort of education on upkeep and maintenance, yeah.
Well, a lot of it, people may not just have the means to do it.
Right.
I mean, as, as far as the knowledge, but.
Where they get elderly.
Yes. Right. Thank you, thank you, Mr. Vincent.
Anything else you got for next month, send it?
I can't think of anything. I, I could probably reach out to Cedar Corp, see kinda where things are with them. Touch base with them and then I'll bring some language about disabled vehicles and junk. And then if, like I said. People have some time, wanna start flipping through this and put some notes in the margins so we can discuss it. The meeting would probably be the most way to go. Forward, so.
Anybody else got anything they wanna?
How about this, um, guy that was gonna paint? Uh, Spencer was gonna give us a different mural every month.
Haven't heard anything yet. We can reach out, uh, this season and see where they're at.
Yeah.
Here, we wanna look at the next meeting date?
Yeah, we gotta move it back to our regular.
Regular Thursday, yeah.
And we can, we can skip this month then? Or are we gonna come back? I'm sorry, I'm, maybe I'm on the wrong. October's.
Yeah, that's, I was thinking October's meeting. The next regularly scheduled one would be the twenty-eighth of October.
Everybody all right with that?
Well, if the volleyball team makes it to sectionals, I would not, but I, I would, I would say they would probably. It'd be pretty safe to say that the twentieth would be okay.
We put down the twenty-eight. Looking for adjournment.
I'll second.
I should be in second to adjourn. All in favor?
Hi.
Or adjourned. Thank you.
Thanks, Steve.